Ninth, regularly, regular meeting of the Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission. The roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are the representative of the city's planning department, the city's attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Wortman Associates. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission, not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, BlackBerrys, PDAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting, please either be placed in silent mode or turned off. Brent, the roll call, please.
Mr. Edmonds.
Here.
Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Kempin.
Here.
Mr. Krent.
Here.
Mr. Sanzika.
Here.
Mr. Shepkey.
Here.
Mr. Schultz.
Here.
Mr. Strat.
Mr. Tagle.
Here.
All right. I have a motion on the agenda as prepared. Second. Mr. Edmonds, second.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Kempin.
Yes.
Mr. Krent.
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika.
Yes.
Mr. Shepkey.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
All right, you've received copy of our last minutes of the September 25th special study meeting. Do I have a motion, or is there discussion?
I would move to approve as published.
Second.
Support.
Mr. Kempin.
Yes.
Mr. Krent.
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika.
Yes.
Mr. Shepkey.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Next item, public comments for items not on the current agenda. If there's someone in the audience who'd like to make a comment, please step forward.
Well, I'm Lawrence Carey. I live at 4530 Lehigh, and that's in the northwest quadrant of Waddles and Crooks. I wrote you a letter. I don't know if you received it, but I just wanted to be able to address some of my concerns as far as the building of the 7-Eleven before there's any final approval, if I may.
The building at Waddles and Crooks?
Yes.
Well, we've already approved that.
It's been final approved, or?
From our, from our body, it has. I don't remember, Brent, was that going on to city council?
No, it, it has not received final approval from, administratively, but it has received final action from this board. So the next step in the process would be final site plan approval, which is administrative.
Through the city administration?
Correct.
Okay, so.
But feel free to share your comments.
Well, you already read the letter. I sent a copy to Mr. Cole Pippa also, so, and the council, so, I guess, if you're done, I guess, you know, it's on record as far as my letter goes, as far as my opposition, but I guess the main thing is, I, I'm not familiar with the neighborhood, no new ordinance, but I, I would probably, when I read about it in the paper, probably wouldn't even thought about it, other than, I just don't really think it fits that because of its location, and I know it's a little flippant. I've been accused of that before when I was working here, but, but, like I said, there's, none of the people in Whitechapel are gonna go to that location, I don't think, but, but the, the, if, if, I think that ordinance would probably be, I don't know if it would fit, but it's, like, was mid-mile or something, but at the corner there, probably, I don't see anybody really walking to, to that location, other than the other things I said in the letter, like, there'll be three 7-Elevens within two miles, and, and, you know, enough's enough, I guess. Okay, I, I guess I'll just go some other route then. But, just from, for my, I guess, I, you know, it's somewhat my fault as a citizen, but I haven't checked the, I don't go check all the agendas all the time, but, but, I don't know, I noticed that the neighbors had about this going in or out before.
They would have been notified, is it within 300 feet or 500 feet?
Not for site plan review, it was just, it was a simple, preliminary site plan review application. Had it been a special use application, that would have been, that would have triggered the 300-foot, 300-foot notification.
Okay. Did you get a copy of Mr. Carey's letter?
Yes.
Okay. It has not been distributed to the commission?
I don't think it was addressed to the commission. I think it was addressed to city council.
Okay.
It was forwarded to all the city council members.
All right. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
But, Mr. Carey, if you wanna, if you wanna send me your letter, I can, I can certainly...
I sent it to Mr. Cole Pippa and council.
Okay, and you didn't, you weren't emailed the, the letter?
I don't remember seeing it.
I don't remember.
You got it off the website.
It was only on the city packet for council. That's where I saw it.
The cop, the copy I saw, Mr. Carey, I, I don't recall seeing it addressed to city council, it was addressed to, to city manager and the council members.
I had a copy, it was the planning commission, and...
I can, if you give it to me, I'll forward it to them all.
We have copies, too.
Okay, thank you.
I sent three copies.
Thank you. All right, moving on the agenda, item five, the zoning ordinance text amendment file number ZOTA 244, miscellaneous zoning ordinance revisions. Mr. Carlisle, is this going to be you?
Yeah, I think, I'll start, and then Brent and I will kinda work off each other and tag-team this, this item. As the planning commission is well aware, at the last meeting, we had brought approximately 20 or so total text amendments in regards to the zoning ordinance, which was adopted in April 2011. At that meeting, we only presented what we felt were the 12 substantance, substantive amendments, and since that, during that discussion, there were three of those 12 that were highlighted for further discussion, and so, we did, we're not bringing back the nine other ones, we, we are moving those forward as, as recommended by the planning commission, but there are three more, the three ones that we wanna bring back for discussion with the planning commission. Just as a, as a qualifier, once we're done, hopefully tonight, with these three items, a future public hearing will be scheduled to consider the totality of all 26 text amendments moving forward. So the first item, as we discussed, and I, I don't have a copy in front of my screen, so I'm gonna read off this, is parking in the front of the building. As we discussed, in the OM, the, I'm sorry, the CB, the GB, the O, and the RC district, parking is not permitted in the front yard. Recognizing that these are automobile-oriented type districts, we felt that some limited parking should be allowed in the front yard. The planning commission did agree with that, and we decided to cap that at 50% of the building frontage. In addition, the planning commission felt there should be some ability for relief, and that is to exceed the 50%, they have to go in for the sustainable development option. The question when Brent and I were actually starting to write the language is, one is, should the parking area need to be located directly in front of the building, as we interpreted the current ordinance being written? And secondly, how do we quantify, how do we administer? I mean, talking to Chairman Tagle today, there are really two issues. One is, the amount of parking in front of the building, but also, the location of the building, of the parking in front of buildings. Where, where, those two ideas are up for consideration. So, in your pack, we presented two options, but we're actually gonna enter a third option as we were kinda getting through some of the issues Director Savinat were talking about today. So the first option is to limit parking permitted... Brent, you wanna move to the next slide? Parking in front of the building. So this is option one. So no more than 50% of the building's linear front may be occupied by, by parking. I'm gonna stand up here and kinda point to, point to things. This is a direct, literal interpretation of the ordinance, which talks about the building linear frontage, no more than 50% can be occupied by parking. So regardless, it's this line to this line, and this space in between. I wanted to work off the current site example, just to give some more specificity to what we're, what we're talking about. So, for the 50% parking, this distance would allow for seven parking spaces capped at that 50% parking. Brent, you wanna move on? The problem with that is, there's, there's a number of positives and negatives with that. One, it limits parking in front of the building, which is, this is somewhat a good thing, but it maintains building visibility. It does encourage longer linear buildings that have more building frontage on the street. However, it's very difficult for some of those deep sites, which have buildings that are more perpendicular to the street rather than parallel to the street, because it does not provide for parking. It might provide for, for greater landscaping and green space, or it might provide for the building to be closer, but again, parking will be limited on the building for older, deeper buildings, as well as drive-through buildings, which are more longer, narrow, narrow buildings, et cetera. So that's the first issue, where we both dictate the location of the parking, as well as the number of parking. Brent, you wanna move to the next slide? Option two that we came up with was that, let's not worry about where the parking's located in front of the building, let's just worry about the number of parking spaces. So this requirement is that no more than 50% of the building, building front yard, which is the distance from the property line, again, to the building's frontage, minus the setback line, which is this line except here, may be occupied by parking. So taking this example, that, the total amount of this blue area, which is where this would be occupied as parking, is 93,000 square feet. Divide that, too, which is 50%, gets you to about 40, 4,600 or so. Taking 4,600, divided by the average size of a space, which is about 100, 180 square feet, you're allowed up to 25 parking spaces. So by, by requiring it by this, they can have a total of 25 spaces, not dictating where they're located on the site, except they can be located anywhere within this area. So again, this limits the number, but not the specific location. This site, for example, these, this site right here, those parking spaces, there are 22 parking spaces for this existing site in front of the building. So this would allow additional three spaces of what they currently have. That all being said, just because it allows for 25 spaces, doesn't mean they're gonna actually be able to fit 25 spaces in there, because when you start adding drive aisles, curb cuts, parking engines, et cetera, I'm sorry, drive aprons, they might not be able to get up to 25. It's just taking a literal definition of 50% of that total area, they can get 25 spaces. Now, when Brent and I were kinda discussing this today, we got into an issue of, how do we administer this? How do we calculate this? Who does the calculation? Do we have an engineer come and certify this and calculate this? And it's got to be a, kind of a big headache. So, I mean, now we're gonna represent what we feel is option three, the one that we are kind of, are kind of leaning on. Let me just, real quick. So again, this allows us to, to initially more parking in front of the building. It does maintain, it has the potential to maintain some building visibility. However, we find it difficult to quantify and administer, but it does allow for more flexibility in terms of where the parking can be located. So the third option is, let's not have us worry about the, where, where they're located, let's just, let's just quantify the number. And so this basically says that no more than 50% of the required onsite parking may be located in the front yard. This picture got switched up. This is Rochester, this is the building we're still talking about here. Using this example, this is an 8,000-square-foot building. 8,000-square-foot building of general retail requires 32 parking spaces. So under, or option three, half of those, or 16 of those 32, can be located in front of the building. The remaining have to be on the side or the rear of the building. This really is kind of the median point between what we're, option one and option two. Option one only allowed seven parking spaces, if you define it right in front of the building. Option two allowed up to 25 spaces, and option three is 16 spaces. So this is a happy medium between the two. This, in our opinion, is much, much easier to administrate, it's much easier for the applicants to understand. We don't dictate where it is located in front of the building, this is just quantify the number, and the number in front of the, in front of the building. Brent, do you wanna jump on?
Yeah, it's, what I, what I did when I was, when we were starting to jump into this was I looked at, look, Troy is almost built up, okay? There's not a lot of farmer's fields left, okay? Obviously. And so what we're talking about is a lot of retrofitting, a lot of infill, reuse, these types of things. So, we're not talking about, this, this is really gonna impact existing buildings that have green space in front of them, and that they want more parking, they wanna redo it. So, from that approach, I, I think we wanna have, provide some flexibility, because the die's already kinda cast, and I think that whatever approach we have, I think it needs to be relatively simple. And when we started talking about, you know, parking having to be in front of the building, depending on how the building is oriented, we were talking about existing buildings, if they're, if the narrow part of the building is facing the street, there's really not a lot of advantage to forcing the parking to be in front of the building. So I think we, we need to be a little bit more flexible. When you look at an area of, where there's a lot of CB, which is Rochester Road, there's not a lot of sites that have a significant amount of open space in front of the building. So, but by, by having a provision like this, we're gonna increase landscaping. I mean, we're gonna, I think it's a step, regardless of which three of these we go with, it's gonna be a step in the right direction.
Mr. Schultz?
Can we go back to the drawing, or the picture for option one, please? Those seven spaces that are highlighted in red, if we shift them to the left, they get 14 spaces, because they can park on both sides of the street. So, in that case, it's not seven spaces, it's 14. This is worst case, not best case, under the option that was proposed.
Under option one? Well, option one is, if you take a very strict, literal reading of the ordinance, it says that no more than 50% of the building frontage, this distance, this distance can be occupied by parking. So that being said, they're not allowed to park the full length of this building, they're only allowed to park half of it for 50%, and that 50% is seven spaces.
But, the seven spaces, it doesn't say that they can't have a double-loaded driveway. It says they can only occupy 50% of the building, so if you slide those seven places to the left, they can also park on the bottom half of the road with another seven spaces.
Well, that's the issue we got into, is, is if a strict definition or reading of the, of the ordinance, as I read it, and as I think Brent reads it, and it's up for, for interpretation, is, when we talk about, brilliant, in these districts, as the ordinance is written, parking location is in front of the building, it's not adjacent to the, adjacent to the right-of-way. So it has to be in front of the building.
But we're saying, excuse, just one second. We're saying that they're allowed to park between the setback line and the front yard line, so, I don't think the, I don't think the ordinance does say that they can't park up to the setback line. It only says that they can park 50% of the building dimension, not single-loaded.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the, that's the issue that we were, we were, we were talking about this at the last, at the last meeting, and it says, how we read it is, the total, the total site's linear feet along the front building line. So we dictate that the front building line, adjacent to the building itself, can be occupied by parking, because the first clause of the ordinance says parking should not be located in the front yard. So taking that definition, adding the second B, is, if you are allowed parking in the front yard, it has to be adjacent to the building. That's a very, very, very strict interpretation of the ordinance, which, that's how we interpret, not necessarily how we thought it was intended to be written, or intended to be followed, but that's a strict interpretation of the ordinance as currently written. For that reason, that's why we, that's why we presented the three options. One is, do we care about the location? Or do we really care about the number?
Mr. Shepkey.
Yeah, there's a lot of unusual lot configurations in Troy with businesses like a 7-Eleven or something like that, and there are many of them, that the only place they have to park is in front of the building. So what are you going to, how are you gonna do, adapt it to some unusual lot configuration, so that you can't tell the owner that, hey, you can only park in 50%, because in peak periods, he's gonna be, his hands are tied, and he's gonna lose a lot of business.
Well, currently, those are non-conforming buildings already. We're making this, we're making this more conforming by allowing them, you know, to, to park in the front of the building. Yeah, as, as we currently interpret it, you're not allowed to park in the front yard.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that. And another thing, what about a place like Heartland or something that, a medical care facility, where people get out of the hospital early? I mean, every inch of that property is parked up all the time. Is that going to eliminate parking places in a, in a building such as a convalescent facility?
Yeah, as the ordinance is, I'm not sure what zoning district that is, that is in, do you know off the top of your head?
That's, that's actually, that's a consent judgment, so it's, that's a little bit different animal, but I, but you're, but I understand your point. This only, this, this provision only affects, I think, is it four zoning districts, Ben?
Four zoning districts, but it doesn't differentiate uses within those zoning districts. It applies for any building within those zoning districts, regardless if it's a commercial office, medical building, et cetera.
So, so right now, if, if there's an existing building that has a, let's say it's got 100% of the parking in front of the building, well, just for argument's sakes, right now it's illegal nonconformity, because they're not allowed to have any. So whichever one of these we go with, assuming we allow more parking in front, it's gonna be more conforming. And, but regardless, if they don't make any physical changes to the site, because they're legal nonconforming, they can continue forever, as long as the building isn't destroyed, more than 60%. So, in that instance, you know, they can continue.
And mind you, we're also, part and parcel of this, whatever we number we decide on, we still do recommend that we allow the relief up to 100% if they do the sustainable design option, that we had talked about, or sustainable development option...
Yep.
...that we had talked about earlier. So 50% is, is a minimum, and then they can get up to 100% going through the committee of the sustainable design option. I see. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Edmonds.
Does option three still allow for the area all the way up to the setback line also?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, the graphic got messed up here, but, within, outside the setback, between the setback and the front building line, you're allowed to have up to 50% of your, of your, of your required parking can be in that location, as long as you meet the setback.
And they can't shrink the parking spaces, you know, for the depth?
Well, they're still required to do the, the normal width and length of a parking space.
And, and they're still required to have a 20% open space on the site? And they're still required to provide detention and all, you know, the same...
They still have to provide ADA handicap spacing and...
Yes, Mr. Hudson.
I like three, because it gives a lot of flexibility to any building in there, and as long as we've got the requirement of green space, I mean, with the area like a number three, that illustration, that gives a planner some options to do his landscaping and not be tied to 50% in front of a building. I like number three. I think it throws more imagination, gives us more flexibility.
And easier to administer.
Yes.
Any other comments, questions?
I have a question. Like, if we were to have, say, regional development, you know, section, section development, in the past, it would have been, say, a strip mall with maybe two outlot developments in front. How would we do the math in something like that?
Typically, outlots are on their own parcel, so we would handle it like its own parcel development would be parcel by parcel, unless we did some sort of, did some sort of shared parking agreement, where they could reduce the number of parking spaces. But, for example, Oakland Mall has come into us a few times to do outlot developments, and we treat those outlots like they, like we would any other parcel development. They're, they are their own parcel, they're required to meet their parking requirements.
In some instances, we, there's, there's, there's a parking, there's shared parking opportunities, so in some instances, it allows us to actually reduce the amount of asphalt on the outlot site, because there's such a copious amount of parking on the, on the parrot site. So in some ways, we get less asphalt.
So if we were to do a combined development site, where would that leave the rest of the strip mall as a nonconforming, so?
What, what?
The way I understand it, the outlot development is covered. What about the, the back shopping plaza?
Well, it's, it's currently, if it's in these districts, it's currently now a nonconform, we would have considered a nonconforming structure, and this brings it into more compliance. So it becomes more conforming than what it currently stands now.
By, because parking isn't permitted in the front yard, and we'd be replacing parking with building, it would actually be more in compliance, because we'd be eliminating more parking, in terms of the building in the back.
Now, if, in this case, if a, if a, if a new strip mall came in, they would be limited in terms of the number of spaces they can have in front of the building. That would be it, if we go with this example, they'd be 50%, and the rest has to be behind the building or to the rear.
So, so it might drive them to more unique or distinct architecture designs?
It might, or they could potentially apply for sustainable development project status, and put more parking in the front, and do creative design on the side or at the rear. It gives them, they still have that flexibility to, to get creative and get with our committee and come up with something creative.
Mr. Krent.
Ben, what is the, is the purpose of limiting the parking to gain more green space? And if so, why don't we regulate how much green space as opposed to how much parking? In other words, say, 20% or 30%? Have you looked at that?
We did. Brent and I went back, and, and one of the options was that we were starting to say, well, let's just require 50% green space in the front, and that became, the reason we didn't do it that, because it, because there are so many sites right now that are similar to this, where they're 100% paved, and they can't meet that greenscape requirement, that it would create a whole number of additional nonconformities that we didn't wanna enter, we didn't wanna go into that direction. We felt like this is the cleanest way to do it, this, this allowed for some drive aisle circulation, it allowed for parking, but it also allowed for additional green space. We felt this was the cleanest way to do it, rather than add additional green space and open space requirements located in the front yard. Because essentially, what, what you're asking to do, what Brent and I actually talked about doing was, let's just increase the setback. Let's take it from 10 feet to 20 feet, 30 feet, and that just pushes the building back even further from the street, and that's not the intent and purpose of this.
I'm gonna just add to, Tom, that doing it this way, they can increase the percentage by going to the sustainable committee, so it's kinda like, we'll get something out of it if they wanna get more parking up there, as opposed to regulating the green space, if they wanna reduce the, it's almost like we're working backwards, if we say, if you wanna get more parking, what are we gonna do to reduce, you know, to reduce the green space?
One other comment, if I could follow through. If someone else had a comment, go ahead.
Mr. Schultz, did you have your hand up?
I just, I think we need to step back and take a whole look at this, because there is the possibility, and it's happened in the last 10 or 15 years in the city, of people assembling property, like they did at the southeast, southwest corner of Rochester and Big Beaver, and I'm willing to bet that that development never would've gone in there if we told them that only 50% of their parking can be in front of those buildings. It's a big-box retail store. Big-box retailers do not want parking behind the building, they want parking in front of the building. So, I'm wondering if we need to take a little bit longer look at this and make sure that we're not biting off our nose to spite our face and end up having somebody say, well, if I can only have 50% of the parking in front of my strip mall, I'll take it to Rochester Hills. Thank you very much.
Ben and I talked about this a great deal today, and we, jokingly, we talked about three options, and then I said, you know, there's a fourth option. We just, where it says no parking in front, we just take a red pen and we strike it out, and we just let them, you know, we still have the 20%, and the 20% open space on the site requirement, and we just, we both kinda laughed, like, ha-ha, you know, that's too simplistic. What, but I, I get where you're coming from, Mr. Schultz.
Let's push it to 25% green space and cross out no parking in the front yard, or look at that option.
This all came about to, to create a better visual image from the street to, or what was the driver behind this?
I try to recall why, going back, clearly, we wanted a higher, higher degree of design in our form-based districts, which is Big Beaver, Maple, and the 21 notes. We, we could all agree on that, though, those that were on the planning commission at the time. The no parking provision in front of, in these other, in front of the building, in these other districts, I, I don't recall what our intent was, having those provisions, because I don't think our intent was to treat all the other, these other districts the same way as we did the form-based districts, and not allow parking in front. Bob has his hand up.
I think, if my memory serves me, I think I can tell you exactly, at least one contributor to that, is that there's a building down on Maple Road. Used to be called Beauty Craft, I don't know what it's called now. There was discussion about putting... There was discussion about putting—it has a very attractive green lawn in front of it, and there was a discussion about them putting parking in it. And a number of the planning commissioners were opposed to that green space being turned over to parking because parking is not terribly attractive. And what little lawn they have would have been turned, like, 80% into parking. And I think that was the seed that—that and other locations like it was the seed that germinated into this. That's my memory.
The only other thought I have on this, are there other ways to accomplish what we want to do without regulating the number of cars in front of the—in this front yard area? You know, visually obscuring with berms or landscaping or something like that. Again, without making it a fortress so that you can't see the building, but certainly, it doesn't take a lot to screen a car.
Part of the reason why you limit the parking in front of the building is not only so your building is covered, so your building's not covered by parking, but it's also to bring the building closer to the street to create a greater presence. Because the more parking you have, the farther the building is from the street. What I like about option three, I think Brent would agree with me on option three, is it allows—it allows a limited amount of parking, but with the sustainable design option, they can get up to 100% provided that they give something back as part of that. It's a little bit of a carrot and stick kind of compromise that I think is something that the development community actually would welcome, that kind of give and take a little bit. So I think option three really does kind of meet our goals of creating better design, better form, even if it's outside the form-based districts, but also still allows some flexibility for the development community as well.
So using Mr. Schultz's example, which is a really good one, perhaps in the case of someone who assembles a large amount of property, wants to put a mixed-use retail strip kind of back, they could get more creative with the landscaping. They could have rain gardens, bioswales in the parking lot. They could get—they could use low-impact lighting, they could use really creative stormwater. You know, there's ways that they could be creative and still have close to 100% of the parking in front, that so we'd get a win-win. We'd still get our landscaping and our quality of parking area, but they'd get more parking in front.
I agree with that. Excuse me, I'd forgotten that you could get it up, ratchet it up to 100%. Mr. Schultz.
How does the parking lot vehicle screening in the new ordinance apply to these zoning It was our desire to have something green about three feet tall to screen vehicles. Does that apply to these zoning districts? If so, this example up here on the screen, there's no place to put anything to screen the cars because they're parked right up to the setback line or the property line.
Give me some time to look it up. If anyone else has other comments or questions, I'll—let me address that.
Mr. Edson.
I can fill in some time. The option two, that allowed 25 spots, that area included the drive space between the parking spaces. Now, maybe we could eliminate that and say it's 50% of parking spaces that could be accommodated in that space and eliminate that, any driveway area. And that way, again, then you would be reducing the amount of vehicles.
Right. Brent and I discussed that as well today, and the issue, what we initially put in was no more than 50% of the front yard can be parking spaces, drive aisles, or driveway aprons. Realistically, most front yards are going to be over 50% just with drive aisles alone at the current development pattern. So it just didn't really work when you just tried to exclude parking versus drive aisles. It just—and it was very difficult to calculate and administer, and the more we thought about it, the more we kind of threw out different variables, and it just—we want to make this as clean and simple as possible. Let me just—before Brent looks up, just comment on the question. There's an ac—there is a—whether or not this meets it or not, I can't tell you, but there is a required setback of 10 feet for parking in this zoning district. So that screening should go within that 10 feet from the right-of-way to the parking location.
And I looked it up. We do require screening of parking lots that abut thoroughfares. We just haven't had many applications that have parking in front that abut thoroughfares because we don't allow parking in those districts that we've had site plans for.
Mr. Sanzi.
Just wondering, how do we move ahead? Do we—you need a motion to approve option three?
I was going to ask, is this—
Well, I think what we talked about was talking kind of in concept of—and then we'll take—you know, if it takes another meeting to talk about, you know, this one item, fine. Rather than get stuck on the minutia of the text, conceptually, we just wanted a kind of a direction that the planning commission wanted to go in, and we could take it from there.
Mr. Schultz.
I appreciate everything that's been done. I would bet that in the majority of these zoning districts, the vast majority of the buildings have narrower frontage than they do depth, as opposed to the photo that was chosen, which has—is virtually square. I don't think a lot of those—I don't think a lot of the properties we're talking about are square. I think they're rectangular and they're narrower on the roads' frontage than they are on depth. So maybe we need to go back and apply option three to that situation and see what we end up with. Just a thought.
Do you have enough? Would you like to get any level of support? Mr. Schultz has just given one thought.
I think I've heard those of the planning commission that have been vocal kind of are giving me the same kind of vibe about option three, and unless someone has any opposition to that.
I was going to say, are we in general agreement that three is the option to look at and see if we can tweak and fine-tune?
Yes.
I see a lot of heads going up and down.
Right, that's what we needed.
All right.
Hopefully, the next one will go quicker. The second item is automotive and transportation uses in the IB. As we discussed, we felt that there are certain automotive and transportation uses in the IB districts which should be permitted by right. After discussion, we fell on vehicle repair, antique and classic vehicle sales, ambulance facilities, and vehicle rental. Understanding that there's still the planning commission concerned about protecting single-family properties, it's part of the master plan objective as well, we put in a requirement that anything within 300 feet of residential zone in or used parcel requires a special use. Brent, you have a report. So this is a change to the language itself, it just changes from special to permitted in the table of allowable uses. Brent, you have a report. And this is the language that states that those proposed uses, vehicle repair, antique sales, ambulance, and vehicle rental, if they're within 300 feet, measured from the nearest lot line to the nearest lot line, are required to go through a special use permit as set forth in Article IX.
Any questions, any comments?
I have to ask a question, sorry. When we were talking about permitting, and it's kind of tied to this, though probably not directly, when we were talking about permitting vehicles, used vehicle sales on major thoroughfares, there was substantial discussion about there being a distance requirement between used vehicle sales facilities, which I believe we were told at an earlier meeting didn't make it into the ordinance. And the reason that the planning commission put that forward was so that we didn't end up with a mile of Maple Road that was all used car lots. So, though this may not be the right place, I would like to bring that back up for discussion if we're going to make a zoning ordinance text amendment, that we put a distance, minimum distance, between facilities that auction, sell, new and/or are used vehicles that are not in the automotive district.
So that we do not get a concentration of them?
Do you remember, Brent, if that was, in fact, the case, that it did not get in the ordinance?
I don't recall, but that doesn't mean that we didn't have that discussion.
Right, all right.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure it didn't make it into the ordinance, and my memory doesn't tell me why that cell died.
Mr. Edmonds.
I fully agree with Mr. Schultz. I do remember that discussion, and I wasn't aware that it didn't make it into the ordinance. I guess I didn't, you know, read every single thing in the ordinance, but no, we don't want to become another eight-mile road and, you know.
If that's the direction of the planning commission and I get Legals' head nod, we would treat this similar to, for lack of a better term, adult use, which has a thousand-foot separation between another adult-use enterprise.
Sue's head nod was, I said, can you research whether we can do this or not?
Okay.
And she said, yes, I will.
Okay.
So we'll look into it, Mr. Schultz. I mean, I understand where you're coming from. It's basically the same—the same principles as regulation of adult uses, which is trying to ensure that there's no concentration so that it doesn't have a negative effect on property values and et cetera, et cetera. So Sue will look into it.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, there's—with adult uses, we had to make—to a lot of studies about deleterious effects and how it affects the community. You have to do a lot of research like that, and that's what I will research to see if this is something that—it's a lot different than adult uses, but it still has some deleterious effects on the community.
Will you be looking to see if other communities have set a precedent? Yeah, okay. All right. Good, thank you.
Mr. Tagle, from me.
Yes, Mr. Edson.
Maybe just some information from me. We have an automobile district. Is this separation excluding that district?
This—the used automobile sales are permitted within that district.
Right.
But I—
Is all automotive use in that special district over off of—
Right.
—Kurtz and Maple.
But that district is—I think the character of the design, the uses in that district is pretty well—it's pretty well set that it's used—it's new car sales with some used vehicle sales as accessory, but for the most part, it's new vehicle sales. And I think where Mr. Schultz is coming from is his concern, and I don't want to speak for him, but we've got a lot of vacant buildings in, for example, in our IB district where there's very motivated sellers, and there's people that are more than willing to take these properties, especially along major thoroughfares, and start selling used vehicles.
And I'm agreeing with Mr. Schultz on that. I'm just thinking, if we put a separation in there, we should probably, if we have to, exclude it from that automotive district that's already there. The concentration is what they wanted.
So exclude used vehicle sales as a primary use, as a principal use?
I do want to say that all vehicle sales totally have to go through the special use process, so they're not a permitted use, so they do have to come and get special approval from the planning commission, and that would be one of the factors we would consider is location to adjacent. You know, adjacent or near proximity to other used auto facilities as well.
Just a clarification on my part. Mr. Edson, were you saying that if we can put a distance for used car sales in zoning districts, it would not include the current automobile area that—
Yeah, I wouldn't have any problem with a distance less than 1,000 in that automotive district.
Right, okay.
But exclude—
I understand.
—from any limitation.
I see where you're coming from now. I misunderstood. Our ordinance doesn't actually differentiate between new and used vehicle sales. It used to, but it doesn't anymore.
It used to require that if you were going to sell used cars, you had to be a new car dealership. You had to be a new car agency.
All right, move on. No, Mr. Edmonds.
One other quick—I seem to recall, and maybe Mr. Schultz remembers too, didn't we also talk about—we were talking about this distance between used car facilities, about how close they could park them to the road and whether they could use flags? I think there was a whole other discussion about that.
Thank you, Ted.
It sounds like the direction that the planning commission wants to go in is separating new versus used vehicles?
Well, I think we want to have controls on used car vehicles outside of the district down on Maple Road, is what we're—at least, that's a sense I'm hearing.
That's what I was saying.
You want to control all vehicle sales or just used vehicle sales? Because right—
I tell you what, let's do this. Let's see what Ms. Lancaster comes back with and maybe table that question until we find out—
Okay.
—if there's been any precedence there or how big of a hill it is to climb.
But we've heard the direction that you want to go in.
Okay, thank you. Move on?
Just want to clarify, do we get consensus that this is the direction, it's an okay direction for us to move forward on this provision?
I believe we did. Is there anyone having any other comments, questions? Are we all good with this, nodding up and down? Yes, okay.
The last item, real quickly, is extended stay facilities. Based on some discussion with the planning commission, not only are we going to add extended stay facilities to the ordinance because they're not in the ordinance itself, but we are going to regulate them similar to hotel and lodging uses. Move forward? Okay. So we're adding them to the table of uses, and we're going to regulate them similar to lodging uses. In addition, under Section 6.16, which is a supplemental use regulation for lodging, we're going to add extended stay facilities to those and just make them consistent.
All right. Questions, comments from Mr. Carlisle or Mr. Simon?
I did have a comment on this one. I know I had made the comment, just, you know, why is this—originally, it was structured the same as the multifamily dwelling, and I don't know that jumping it all the way over to 100% matching with the full lodging is appropriate either. It's somewhere in between, and maybe something in the multifamily unit, maybe it should be a special use permit allowed in there. Just to offer them an opportunity in the right areas with a special use, because I would hate to artificially restrict that sort of development, because I agree there's a lot of similarity there, but it's not quite a full-fledged lodging facility.
I would—Mr. Carlisle and I have both looked at that site recently after our conversation, and the one—the facility that's off of Livernoy looks a lot more like a multiple-family residential development than it does a hotel. It just—it's got—it just has more of a—it doesn't seem to be as transient. You know, it's the way it's kind of, you know, the vibe that you get when you visit the site. I think the one close that's on Kurtz is more like a—like it's more transient in nature. That's just kind of the feeling I get when I look at them.
Mr. Schultz.
Since I'm still learning all the new numbers, is RC still Research Center?
Yes.
So we're saying that we wouldn't permit an extended-stay hotel under any circumstances in a Research Center?
As proposed, that's correct. They're not permitted anywhere right now.
And office, they're not permitted?
We don't allow any sort of residential uses in the Research Center or Office District, not multifamily lodging and/or now extended-stay facilities in either of those two districts.
If you recall, Mr. Schultz, the Holiday and Express had to rezone from RC to OM, I believe, for the—
I would think that it would be more appropriate for it to be a special use requirement in those zones personally than just saying, no, it's not permitted.
Well, if that's the case, then because we're in the consensus that they're in between a multifamily and lodging, if we're going to open extended-stay facilities in those districts, we should also consider opening them, opening those districts for multifamily and hotels and lodging facilities, which is another—it's a much bigger endeavor than we should—this is something we should think about if that's the intent of those districts. The Office District is intended to be an office-only district. The OM allows for office-mixed use, which is office mixed with residential, mixed with commercial development. The Office is supposed to be a standalone Office District without residential entities. I think Research Center is the same vibe. If the planning commission wants to open up the uses in those districts to explore that, that's something that we can consider and take under advisement.
I'm just saying that I think we probably get more business people coming in and out of town using hotels and extended-stay facilities than we get tourists. And if I were a businessperson, I'd probably like to be able to stay someplace within a reasonable distance of the office that I'm working in. I just think in the Office and Office-mixed use and RC that perhaps we should include them as a special use requirement.
Mr. Edson.
I'd like to concur with Mr. Schultz.
I'd like to concur with Mr. Schultz. We're trying to make our community more walkable, so if we would encourage having those extended stays near the places where these people are going to end up working, it would make a lot of sense to make it walkable. Let me, let me take the opposite view. I, I think Troy is not this huge metropolis that it's going to be impossible for someone who is in one of these extended stay facilities to go to wherever he's working in these districts. I'd kind of like to keep him isolated and keep the manufacturing in the office as separate from residential. So I, I like the prohibition.
I guess what, what I'd like to see is the practicality of this discussion. It's one thing to say, we have these districts and let's extend, let's open it up to, to different housing types, but I'd like to see, what does that really mean practically? Where are these districts? What kind of opport, are there really opportunities there to do that? And does it really look like it's a feasible shift or, or use to put in these districts? And, and maybe, maybe look at that a little bit, make a little bit more of an informed decision.
Just really quickly looking at the zoning district map, most of the OM office mixed use district is up in the Northfield area. That's the, the purplish classification here. The blue is the O1. The, the O1, like, like Ben said, is, is really kind of geared towards office. It's a little bit lower in, 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 in intensity than the OM. The OM does allow, does have a mixed use component to it. You go down to Big Beaver, you know, most of the Big Beaver corridor is zone Big Beaver and the mixed use, the mixed use, mixed use is permitted so you could, you know, that would be permitted there in, in some capacity. So I think what we're really talking about, for the most part, there's a, there's some other, there's like some scatterings of OM throughout the city, but most of it's, is in the, the Northfield area. So I, I agree, Mr. Teague, I think we should look at this if, if we're going to take that leap.
I think we need a little bit more information before we, I mean, the, the reality of what, what does this really mean with the districts that we have and what's in them right now? I'm sorry.
That's fine. What I, the facility I know the most about is Heartland up there, and most of the residents of Heartland have come out of the hospital because, for insurance reasons, to go through extended physical therapy, so they're a short period of time. And I think that with the baby boomers right now, a lot of them, my age, people my age and older, are going into these kind of facilities for one reason or another. And I think that this is going to be a growing trend for these types of buildings to be around. So to totally exclude them from maybe an outer edge of an office or whatever area, I think could be a mistake, although I do know that parking from these facilities at peak periods can tend to overflow onto their neighbor's property, and that could cause a problem. But right now, I think lumping it all together like this without more study is, is something that we do a disservice to ourselves by doing that at this time.
Mr. Edmonds.
Well, most of these facilities are up in the, what was it, Northland or?
Northfield.
Northfield, yeah. There's a lot, a lot of vacant office buildings up there. Is there a possibility that some of those might even be converted to extended stay type facilities?
Theoretically, they could convert, if it's a 15-story office building, they could convert numerous stories to, to that type of facility. They could convert to residential, they could convert to main floor to retail. I mean, the OM district would allow for that type of thing to happen.
That wouldn't be a special use requirement or anything?
I'd, I'd have to look.
See, I like Mr. Schultz's, because I think the special use, at least it comes before us and we get to review it, so I think that's.
Well, if it's, sorry, Mr. Hudson, if, if it's up there as an asset, it would be special use, so.
There's always that special conditional use animal out there if this comes up. That would be one way to take care of that problem without changing on the zoning to permit that. So there's a way to do it if they want to do it.
For, Mr. Shapki.
Well, one thing, when I was in construction, we took hotels in Detroit and Highland Park and converted them into buildings very similar to what we're talking about here. And it's, it's really not that hard to do. It all depends on the construction, the building, if it's a, a pan-type construction, sometimes structural steel's a lot harder if it's a building like that. But I think that you're going to see quite a bit of this coming in the future, especially with changes in our, in health insurance that are proposed. And if you have a, a member of your family that's, that's elderly, many, many times there's a long wait to go into a facility, a permanent facility and temporary facilities are really overcrowded as it is. So I think that we have to keep ourselves flexible.
Can I ask those that are leaning that this may be a good direction to go, could you specifically tell Brent and Ben what districts you feel are appropriate to, to create a special use for extended stay? And is that all? Would it be extended stay or would there be any other uses, any other housing types?
Personally, I think lodging and extended stay, because you're talking about extended stay like the Hawthorne and Candlewood Suites, correct? Not nursing homes? Elder care facility? I would say that the office, office mixed use and research center should, we should look at making those available by special use.
I agree. And right now, the office mixed use does have that. It's just the office and the research center that are not permitted.
Can you put the proposed chart back up on the, I think it's different than what we have on our screen.
Oh, is it?
Other way, Brett.
That's past it.
There it is.
I can't read it, sorry.
Yeah.
Put that full screen. Office mixed use it is, but in office and RC it is not.
I'm sorry. I'm going to full screen, just give me, bear with me. There you go.
So office mixed use it is, special use in the non-permitted in office and research center. So we're saying in those two districts, we want to.
Look at making it a special use.
Yeah.
But even lodging should also be.
Right, both lodging and extended. Any other discussion?
So I think we have consensus on at least 10 of the 12 substantive items that we had brought up at the last, tonight's meeting and the last meeting before that. I'll talk to Director Saadon about it, but is, do we, do we think we need to come back with these two for further discussion before we schedule a public hearing?
Don't.
Yes.
Okay. Aren't there three?
There were three tonight, and I felt like we got consensus on the.
Parking.
Park, no.
Well, no.
No.
The middle one, what was that?
That was the distance, oh, that was the used cars, but we were going to look at, and maybe that's a separate item.
I think that, the used cars is.
Is that a different section of the ordinance?
Depending, I, I don't want to put Ms. Lancaster on the spot here, but I, I think we'd like to keep these ones moving along so we can get to, get to the public hearing. And I'm not sure how long it'll take us to look into the use, the automobile, the used automobile requirements.
And that, from your answer, I, it's implied that this would be a different section of this, of the ordinance that that requirement, if it comes about, would go?
I, I think it would, I think it would be, but again, this is, it's going to be based on our, we have to work with the attorney's, attorney's office to move this forward. We'll try, essentially, we'll try to come back with all three.
Okay.
If we can't come back with all three, we might come back with two of the three, because we'd like, like I said, we'd like to keep this, these amendments moving forward.
I understand. Okay, are we good? Mr. Schultz.
Would it be, would it slow the process down because I don't know what's in the, in the pipeline that may be affected by these? Would it slow the process too much if we could take one last look at all of them as they're going to go to public hearing so that we aren't seeing them first the night of the public hearing or a few days before?
I think that was the intent, wasn't it? You're going to bring them back to us in one final form and then schedule a public hearing.
Yeah, we can do that. We will, we'll bring back all the changes in how we're proposing the text for the public hearing, and at the next meeting, we'll, but we'll only, we'll focus on the ones that are still outstanding, but we'll bring back everything together. Does that seem, does that seem clear in the direction that the planning commission wants to go in?
Yep.
Okay.
Anything else on your report?
I can keep talking.
Okay, appreciate it, but I would like to move on. All right, item six, public comments. Seeing no one, we'll move on to item seven, planning commission comments. Ms. Lancaster, do you have anything for us tonight?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Salina?
Last night at the city council meeting, the city council unanimously approved the conditional rezoning request for the Troy Plaza rezoning, the one that we worked on for numerous planning commission meetings.
Good, thank you. Sir Hudson?
Kudos to Ben for his new graphics in the presentation. I, it's impressive. Well done.
It's very amateur, but thank you.
Mr. Kret. Mr. Kempin.
No comment.
Mr. Schultz?
I was pleased to see this week that, and I don't know if it's still the same retailer that originally proposed it, but the redevelopment behind the Redwagon Liquor and Wine Shop and both to the west and to the north is underway. It appears that a big part of the building has been demolished and the pad for what appears to be a fast food restaurant is going in and new green spaces being built. It, it's always exciting to see new, new things happening in the city.
Mr. Shapki.
Yes, Mr. Schultz brought up last week about the sidewalk abatements being possibly moved from the traffic committee to the planning commission, and I wonder if anything has been further discussed on this matter.
We've scheduled a meeting, but we have not discussed it.
Thank you.
Mr. Ed.
No comment.
Sanzito?
No comment.
Mr. Carroll, nothing? I just want everyone, if you don't know this, Tom's not here tonight because he had surgery yesterday, and I don't know if anyone knows how he did or how he's doing, but just to let you know that. And other than that, the meeting is adjourned.